The board is in executive session. So can I have a motion to leave executive and open back up to the public meeting?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Where's the flag? Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna toss it over to Dr. Hibbs to begin the presentations of the 2024-2025 Teachers of the Year and Educational Services Professionals of the Year.
Let's hear it. We have a lot. That's awesome. Who's got the cowbell, by the way? There we go. Very nice. We got O V representing with the cowbell. All right, good stuff. We have a lot to be thankful for, right? We have some incredible staff that we're celebrating. We have an incredible visit to the Super Bowl coming up in the next few weeks. We have a Giants fan sitting here, let him hear it. So it is with immense pride and gratitude that we celebrate our outstanding Teachers of the Year and the Educational Services Professionals of the Year. Give them a hand. These incredible individuals exemplify excellence in education going above and beyond to inspire, support, and empower our students each and every day. And we all know how important that is, every day to inspire our kids. Your dedication, creativity, and unwavering commitment to fostering a love of learning and growth within our schools reflect the very best of what education should be. You are the heart and soul of our mission, working tirelessly to ensure that every child feels valued, supported, and capable of achieving their dreams. This recognition is more than just an acknowledgement of your accomplishments. It's a celebration of the collective effort that defines our great district. Together with pride, we build the foundation for a brighter future. One student, one classroom, and one meaningful connection at a time. Thank you for all that you do. Board members, why don't you go down and take your seats? And I'm going to introduce the incredible principal of Grenlock Terrace. So I'd like to introduce. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Christina Cox, who is going to introduce our first incredible Teacher of the Year. We are going to recognize Megan Fizzenmeyer. Let's give her a hand.
Good evening, everyone. It is my honor to present Preschool's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Megan Fizzenmeyer. Better known to all of us as Teacher Meg. Meg has been a dedicated special education teacher in Washington Township for the past ten years. She currently teaches the Preschool Students with Disabilities Program at Grenlock. One of the common threads shared by parents of students in Meg's class is how she treats each child like family and is always in close communication with them. Many of her students are only just turning three and are still learning to communicate. As you can imagine, parents are often nervous about sending their little ones to school without language skills yet. But with Teacher Meg, those fears disappear. Parents know their child is not only safe, but also loved and cared for. Meg truly goes all in when it comes to her students. She doesn't just teach, she creates magic in the classroom. Whether it's by dressing in elaborate costumes for theme days or planning creative activities to make learning a fun, memorable experience. Beyond the classroom, Meg has also established herself as a leader at Grenlock. This year, in collaboration with another teacher, she worked with a company to create a sensory room for students, and she even led an in-service for the staff on how to use this space effectively. She is also a valuable member of the school-based leadership team where she helps develop goals each year to increase inclusive opportunities for students with disabilities at Grenlock. As many of you know, preschool has expanded to multiple locations, including Kendall School. Meg has become the bridge between these locations, ensuring that every staff member feels included and connected no matter where they are. She has an incredible ability to unite everyone, making the expansion a seamless experience for all of us. In addition to her many responsibilities, Meg co-founded the FunTivity Committee, which organizes fun after-hour activities for the whole preschool staff each month. She takes charge of our preschool TikTok videos, always bringing fresh ideas to help spread positivity and foster a vibrant, inclusive school culture. Meg, your infectious positivity and unwavering dedication has created a warm, welcoming atmosphere that makes everyone feel valued. Your ability to unite us with your humor, energy, and heart is truly unmatched. Congratulations, Teacher Meg. You are more deserving than anyone of this recognition. And now I'd like to introduce the dynamic principal of Bell School, Dr. Sean Guyerson.
Good evening, everyone. At Bell's Elementary, we're privileged to work with extraordinary educators who bring their passion, dedication, and creativity to our classrooms every day. Today, tonight, we celebrate Mrs. Melissa Hermly. As you can see, she is a fan favorite of staff, students, and families. She is one of those exceptional teachers who embodies all the qualities we hold dear in our school community. She approaches everything with unmatched style and grace, bringing positivity and energy to every interaction. Whether supporting a colleague, guiding her students, or stepping up to lend a helping hand, her impact resonates not only with her students, but with their families and colleagues. A parent shared, she inspires our children, and she even inspires me as a teacher. I constantly quiz my daughter about how things are done in her classroom, trying to get ideas to use with my students. A colleague beautifully captured her spirit, saying, "She is like no other. She is one of the most dedicated and caring human beings I've had the pleasure of knowing." She goes above and beyond for our students to make sure they are getting the education they not only need, but deserve. She is a great coworker, but an even better human being. Her mindfulness initiatives have provided a calming presence and social-emotional learning tools that have both been relaxing and uplifting for staff. She has a calming presence to her students, colleagues, even me. Mrs. Hermly has a special way about her, something indescribable in the English language. One may characterize it as she has an aura about her that brings a sense of calmness to whomever she has the pleasure of talking to. With deep gratitude for her contributions to our school and community, we are thrilled to announce Mrs. Melissa Hermly as Bell's 2024 Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Mrs. Hermly, on a well-deserved honor. And now I get the privilege of introducing my friend and colleague, Mrs. Julie LaRubio.
Birch's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sandy Fitzpatrick. I've heard many times that everything we need to know in life, we learn in kindergarten. Today, I was in Mrs. Fitzpatrick's kindergarten class and was tasked with dismissing them. Oh my gosh. I asked them on the carpet what they've learned so far in kindergarten, and the first thing they said was, "She doesn't do it like this." But then they played along. Be kind, help others, kiss our brains. We learn to read here. We write numbers sometimes. She keeps us safe. She gives us snacks when we forget, and we cheer for each other. I'd say it's all we need to know these days. With eight years of dedicated teaching in Washington Township and as a proud resident of our community, a wife, a mom of three boys, Mrs. Fitzpatrick has her hands full and still finds the time to make her students lifelong learners. The love she has for her students bleeds out of every single pore in her body. Sandy and her BFF, Mrs. Ambino, were the first teachers I met at Birch's when I was hired. They came in on a hot July day bearing gifts and smiles and comfort at a time that was scary for me, being new to such a huge district. And I immediately realized that this is how they must make their students feel: safe, comfortable, and happy. I knew at this moment that I was in the right place. Sandy told me that she decided to be a kindergarten teacher because as a child, she had teachers who didn't have a handle on behaviors and didn't understand that kids learn differently. She herself struggled to listen and learn when she was little. So she leads with love and patience, especially for those students who learn by doing and watching. She shared that putting every effort into her craft and her students heals her five-year-old self, and I felt that. She advocates for kindergarten. She makes me a better principal. She makes Mrs. Ryan a better building supervisor. She helps us make our school a really good place for kids. She's not afraid to say what she feels, even if it's unpopular, and she will always work to get what she feels the kids deserve. Sandy mentors, writes curriculum, is on all the committees, writes lots of grants, and stays way too late on Friday nights preparing for next week. But with all of this under her belt, the thing that stuck out to me most recently is that all of the votes that she received were from her coworkers. That's very telling. Her peers at Birch's respect her. Two teachers even stated on their ballot that they want to be Mrs. Fitzpatrick when they grow up. I came across this Japanese proverb that, by the way, anybody who read this before tonight made fun of me about, but I'm gonna read it anyway. Better than a thousand days of diligent study is one day with a great teacher. This profound truth highlights the immense influence a great teacher can have, and Mrs. Fitzpatrick truly embodies this. As I walked out of her classroom this afternoon with the last of the bus students physically exhausted, I read a plaque on her wall that said, "It's not I can, it's I can keep trying." Probably the only lesson we all need these days. Thanks for being great for kids. Help me celebrate Birch's 2024 Teacher of the Year, Sandy Fitzpatrick. And then pictures. Next up is our Director of Special Education, Christina Bettiano. She is introducing our A number one E S P. And I will tell you, before I say his name, that Christina Cox and I really wanted to do his speech, but somebody dropped rank on us. Mr. Jeff Bevin.
Good evening. On behalf of Birch's Grenlock Terrace and the Special Services Department, it is with great pride that we officially recognize Jeff Bevins as an Educational Services Professional of the Year. Jeff's dedication and invaluable contributions to our programs have profoundly impacted our students, our families, and our staff. As a testament to his compassion and genuine care, we are delighted to honor Jeff with a special poetic tribute. Knowing his deep appreciation for poetry and rap music, I invite you to join us in celebrating this well-deserved recognition with a heartfelt poem. An ode to Jeff. I did want to try to rap it, but... But tell me if you pick up what I'm saying here. This little story is all about how a very special person became a wow. We'd like to take a minute, so sit right there, and we'll tell you how Jeff Bevin became Educational Services Professional of the Year. In Washington Township is where he stays. Birch's and Grenlock spending most of his days showing up early, tracking data in schools, giving our teachers and parents great tools. When a student struggles, Jeff knows the way: discreet trial, ABA as part of his day. With I E P meetings, a voice strong and clear, ensuring each child's needs are always held dear. Calm and collected with prompts for mans, guiding students across the lands. No matter the challenge, he finds a way, making learning brighter every single day. Now, he is the best. This is quite true. Educational Service Provider of the Year, Jeff, it is you.
And next, Herfill School.
I'm Erica Hulk, new principal of Herfill. It is my genuine honor to present to you the 2024-25 Herfill Elementary Educator of the Year, Mrs. Kaitlyn Drookie. Kaitlyn began her career at Herfill in September 2008 and has been an essential part of our community ever since. Before I share the words of her colleagues and students, I'd like to take a moment to highlight what I personally admire most about Kaitlyn. I deeply respect her leadership. She's a true leader. Her honesty, open communication, her humility, which is going to be mentioned a few times, her team mentality, and her intelligence. I'm continuously impressed by her dedication to creating the best possible programs, environment, climate, culture, and systems for everyone at Herfill. On top of all of this, she also has an awesome sense of humor, and it is a true privilege to work alongside her every single day. Today, during art, I stopped into her classroom to ask her students what they loved most about you. And in perfect kid fashion, there's some good ones. The first one, she's like, really funny. All the kids agreed. I asked another student, he said, "Um, she's been teaching since like 2006 or 2007." So he really likes that about you. They also said some sweet things, like, "She reminds me when I forget things. She is kind, she's fun, she's generous and helpful. She teaches us cool things and comes up with fun ways for us to remember our math. She helps us a lot." The student said that even if you have one group, that you purposely go to all the other groups to check in on them as well, even though you're teaching one group. She always wants to help everyone. And my personal favorite, again, I asked what they love about her. One said, "She really is afraid of squirrels." And then the rest of them started screaming, "And rodents, and all the rodents." So that's their favorite thing, one of their favorite things about you as well. Some highlights from her colleagues. She has a dedication to her students. She puts in 100% effort into helping all students, not just her own students. She's humble and she is a hard worker. A lot of people don't know the amazing things that she does in our building because she is very humble and she kind of flies beneath the radar. She's supportive in leadership. She's the first to sign up, volunteer, donate, offer one-to-one help or guidance for another colleague. In our grade level, so this is from your grade level, she is the real leader and she just doesn't know it. She has commitment beyond expectations. When she was working part-time in the beginning, Kaitlyn often stayed the full day just to help out. She was a part-time teacher, but for the first two years together, she was there almost full-time. She also has a calm and compassionate approach. She's calm, and she has a warm relationship with all of her students, and she strives every single day to make sure that they are set up for success. And finally, she's wonderful at balancing work and family. She not only fights for her students and her colleagues, but she also does this while raising two adorable young boys, which are over there, of her own at home. Genuinely thank you for all that you do. Congratulations again, and Herfill and everybody, let's hear it for Kaitlyn Drookie.
And now I present to you the one and only Tricia Holmes from TJ.
Good evening. Congratulations to all of the esteemed honorees tonight. Thank you for all that you do for our children. It is with great joy that we are here tonight to recognize Thomas Jefferson's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Casey Bish. Casey is joined here tonight by her husband Jeremy, her son Jack, her parents, her very special colleague Matthew, and her TJ family. Casey spreads positivity, energy, and warmth, not only in her classroom but throughout the school. From the moment you meet her, you will feel the joy and enthusiasm she brings. Her love of teaching and students are evident in all that she does. Casey sees each student as an individual, understanding their strengths and challenges, and is always finding ways to support and encourage their growth. Miss Bish's commitment is not limited to the classroom. She can be seen on the sidelines of sporting events for her students. She possesses the gift of being able to connect with students, to make them feel valued, and to ensure that they felt heard. She continually models what it means to have a growth mindset for her learners. She volunteers for curriculum committees and other initiatives that make our school stronger. Casey is always willing to go above and beyond for her students and the school community, whether it's volunteering at events to be our DJ, the bingo caller, or even coming dressed as a Christmas tree, including presents as her shoes. She offers her time to support other teachers, she mentors staff, and as future acts club advisor, she teaches others the importance of giving back, where she models for her students the importance of donating items for our soldiers, raising money for CHOP, and collecting food for local families. Quite simply, she is there for anyone who needs her. Her selflessness and generosity make her one in a million. Above all, Casey makes learning and school fun. She has an incredible talent for turning any lesson into something memorable and exciting. Her creativity and enthusiasm make every student eager to learn and grow. After reading the book Balloons Over Broadway with her students, Ms. Bish started making balloons with her class. This has now grown into a school-wide balloon parade for all of our first and second graders. It's no wonder that her classroom is often filled with laughter and smiles. Casey, your love, energy, and dedication do not go unnoticed. You've made a difference in the lives of students and all of those who are privileged to know you. We are grateful for the incredible impact you've had. Your passion for teaching is an inspiration for all of us, and we are beyond lucky to have you as part of our family. Please join me in congratulating and celebrating Ms. Casey Bish.
It is my honor and dubious privilege to introduce my friend and colleague, the incomparable Ms. Ginny Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Elisa Palazzi and I are very proud to introduce Wedgewood's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Kim Ament. I've already promised not to embarrass her, so I'll try to do my best. Kim is a third-grade in-class support teacher. And what we do know about special ed teachers is they often go unnoticed. They're the ones that are the backbone of the classroom, supporting the students, honoring IEPs, modifying work, and they impact every student in the room. But somehow or another, they seem to get overlooked a lot. Kim comes in quietly, does a phenomenal job teaching, supporting her students, and quietly leaves at the end of the day. No fanfare, no excitement, no look what I've done. The proof is shown in the students. So I talked to many of her students from the previous years. They had some interesting things to say. And from their perspective, what they think Kim does all day is teach them, work with them, help them. And one student said, "She saved me." That's incredible to think about. "She saved me." And I said, "What do you mean? When I'm struggling, she helps me, she's there. She's kind to me even when I make huge mistakes." And she actually said, "I made some pretty big ones." "She forgave me every time, she loved me again." That's a huge impact. And if you think about 20 years here, how many lives did she save? How many children can honestly say, "This is the teacher that saved them"? It's pretty impressive. Absolutely impressive. Now, her colleagues have all kinds of stories to share. But one thing they all say is, "She's there when we need her." She mentors, she coaches, she supports. She'll go in and help a teacher who's struggling with a lesson. She'll answer questions anytime, day or night. She was certainly there for us when we first started at Wedgewood over the years. You could ask her anything. "What about this idea? Do you think this will work?" And the best part is, she's honest. And I think the kids feel that the most. But if I say to her, "I think we should try this," she'll think about it and then she'll tell me what she thinks. "You're wrong, Jen, it's not gonna work." And you know what? I can easily take that from her because this is somebody who knows how to make a difference. Just ask her students. So Wedgewood is incredibly proud and honored to recognize Kim Ament as our Teacher of the Year. Next, I'd like to introduce the amazing and talented Mrs. Julie Hoppe, Whitman's teacher. I'm principal. I knew I'd make one mistake.
Good evening, everyone. The biggest compliment I could ever get is being called a teacher. So I love that. I am so happy to be here tonight celebrating all of these amazing teachers at Washington Township. At Whitman, we are honoring Ms. Jennifer Campbell, our fifth-grade ELA teacher. Ms. Campbell is a bright light in our school for many reasons. First and foremost are her smile and contagious laugh, which can be seen and heard at almost all school and Whitman community events. She is always there. She is our future acts club advisor. She's also our PTO teacher representative. She also goes to many of her students' events outside of school. This forms incredible bonds with the families and students. Another thing that makes Ms. Campbell so special is that she makes learning fun for students. She has fun, funky, flexible seating in her room. Think tiki umbrellas. So kids love to be there and they enjoy learning. I never know when I go there, what I'm gonna come across, what kind of learning activity. When the students in fifth grade were preparing for their scarecrow contest at Duffield's, I walked in and the room had transformed into a total makerspace. Think Bedazzler and a cricket machine. And the kids were so busy and working like Santa's workshop, every single one of them engaged. That's the kind of room that Ms. Campbell has and that's why kids love it. I'm gonna end with some words that have been used to describe her: passion, creativity, excitement, inspiring, willingness to share, going above and beyond, an amazing asset to our school. Congratulations to Ms. Campbell as our Teacher of the Year. I'm going to announce our next. We're moving into our middle schools and I have the pleasure of announcing Mrs. Allison Egacy.
It is my privilege to recognize Bunker Hill's 2024-2025 Teacher of the Year, Mr. Nick Garry. Nick has dedicated over 13 years to Bunker Hill and his impact is known inside and outside of the classroom. I've been fortunate enough to take advantage of his impact during my own journey at Bunker Hill. I started at Bunker Hill only a short time ago in October 2023. As a new administrator, I learned in my education that it is important to find and build relationships with not only veteran staff, but the keepers of the culture of any institution. It wasn't hard for me to identify those individuals. Nick was welcoming, encouraging, helpful, and a go-to person for any questions I may have to understand my new home. There's something very special about the community at Bunker Hill. They are full of pride to be a Bulldog. There is an allegiance there that has been cultivated over time by supportive leaders, but most importantly, the dedicated staff. Nick is a prime example of this. He is first and foremost dedicated to the students. It would be easy to label Nick as the cool social studies teacher that does fun lessons. This is like the second time I've seen him wear a tie, so. What you don't automatically see is that these fun and engaging lessons are solid educationally. They require the students to challenge their thinking, reach deeper levels of understanding, and apply their knowledge. Additionally, they take into consideration the unique individual needs of students in his class. He's able to transform a subject that can easily be students' least favorite and make every student want to learn and participate. The students know what the expectations are and are eager to achieve them. The respect the students have for Nick is evident in any interaction you may observe. They are excited and motivated by him. This is because of the relationships he builds with them. He knows his students individually and models what respect looks like. Reading what students nominated about him is a testament to this. Here's some of their thoughts. "I think he is such a kind teacher and he knows how to help and control his students without getting too mad or aggravated. He has such a good personality and he loves all of his students, no matter how difficult they are to teach. He is always there to help us when we need it and he keeps class enjoyable. Although he is nice and fair, he doesn't put up with any craziness or excuses we might give him. That helps us to learn responsibility, grow, and learn the consequences of our actions. Overall, he is just a nice, kind teacher and the best I've ever had. I feel like he deserves recognition for it. I chose Mr. Garry because he makes learning so much fun and actually makes me look forward to coming to school every day. He always thinks about his students and makes us feel like we have a voice. He always teaches us with passion and makes us laugh all the time. He has made my humanities class 10 times better and I'm not kidding when I say it's my favorite class." So secondly, he's dedicated to his team and school community. He's always willing to lend a helping hand to staff or office needs. He has a positive attitude, even in the hardest of times. He participates in activities that contribute to making Bunker Hill a better place and where everyone wants to be. He's so loved that he gets his own artwork. This pin was purchased by our PTO and painted by our last year's Teacher of the Year, Mr. Murrow. That is a tiara you're wearing, not a crown. Just don't get it twisted. Here's what his staff members have to say. "Mr. G has been an absolute asset to our community and is one of our strongest and most engaging teachers, as well as a leader willing to step into new roles and keep Bunker Hill culture as strong as it always should be. He offers a safe and respectful space for our kids and ensures they're having fun and enjoying themselves. It's pretty impossible to miss his presence or not hear his voice in the classroom, hallways, or at school events. He's been an inspiration to myself and my teaching strategies and a staple to our Bunker Hill environment and is a huge reason why we have such a strong, impactful, and proud culture of learning at Bunker Hill." Lastly, I personally want to thank Nick. I started this year as assistant principal for a week. Then I became the principal. Then I was left without an assistant principal. Shortly after that, I no longer had a supervisor of special education, which is a big thing and a big part of our school. So it was a lot. Thankfully, Nick became an interim assistant principal. He took to the role like a fish in water. I don't know if that's a saying, but we're just gonna go with it. He was hands-on, proactive, and needed little guidance. He was 100% on board when I said, "Let's be middle school slang for Halloween." He was Ohio, I was the Rizler, ask your kids. On long days spent working hard, hand-in-hand with our guidance counselors, he stayed to chat, just like one of the girls. We have all-girl counselors. On days where I couldn't see the finish line, he was there with a banner of encouragement. "Nick, you have an incredible work ethic, initiative, drive, and desire to see all succeed, all balanced with a sense of humor and a love of life." Unfortunately, I couldn't keep him long in the main office because his biggest honor is being a dedicated father. Though I have not worked with you long, as I said before, your impact is wide and noticeable by all. I couldn't think of a better person to represent Bunker Hill Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce my friend and colleague, Teresa Patrowski from Chestnut Ridge.
Ladies and gentlemen, please cheer for the Chestnut Ridge Middle School Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Laura Consiglio. It is with great enthusiasm that we celebrate Laura tonight, a truly outstanding educator at Chestnut Ridge Middle School. Laura's dedication, innovation, and unwavering commitment to her students and her colleagues make her an outstanding choice for Teacher of the Year this year. Mrs. Consiglio has devoted over 28 years to teaching, first beginning... Go ahead, applaud and cheer. Truly outstanding. First beginning her career at Washington Township High School and then finding her forever home at Chestnut Ridge Middle School. During this time, she has proven to be an invaluable asset to our school community, continuing to demonstrate a passion for education and a willingness to go above and beyond for her students and her fellow staff members. The following paragraphs are written in honor of you by your colleagues. First, "What stands out most about Laura is her collaborative spirit and problem-solving abilities." Problem-solving is a very important word to Mrs. Consiglio. "She is the person everyone turns to for guidance and support. Whether it's brainstorming strategies to support struggling students, researching effective solutions, or simply lending a listening ear, Laura's eagerness to assist others without hesitation is a hallmark of her character." Second, "Laura's impact extends far beyond her classroom. She was instrumental in the creation and implementation of our hustle program, which has become a cornerstone of our culture. Thanks to her creativity and hard work, the program continues to thrive, benefiting countless students. And let's not forget all the adults it's benefited." And third, "Her commitment to helping others is not limited to school hours. Laura can be seen driving around Washington Township, delivering gift cards, clothing, and food to families in need. She genuinely cares about every member of the Chestnut Ridge community and Washington Township, county, state, and country, and so on. Many times, we can go into Laura's room and talk about worldly activities to save the world, too. She genuinely cares about her students' learning and her selflessness is an inspiration to all who know her." In the classroom, Mrs. Consiglio shines as an exceptional ELA and special education teacher, inspiring her students to hustle, problem-solve, and excel in both reading and writing. Through her efforts, students develop essential executive functioning skills and gain the confidence to become independent learners. Year after year, her students show remarkable growth under her guidance and it's a testament to her skill, dedication, and genuine care for her success. When I announced Mrs. Consiglio as Teacher of the Year, we do a speech over the loudspeaker and we don't reveal the name of the teacher until the end. And then I ran down to the classroom only to find her students saying, "We knew it was Mrs. Consiglio as soon as you said 'problem solver.'" Mrs. Consiglio advocates for her students every single day. "The world just needs more and more of you, Mrs. Consiglio. You are a fantastic educator. And just like you cheer on all of your students each and every day, we would like to cheer on you as our Chestnut Ridge Middle School Teacher of the Year." And now I'd like to introduce my friend and colleague from Orchard Valley Middle School, Frau Berry.
You guys can do better. Panther pride is real, okay? You do whatever you want, sir. You're being honored, so we'll just follow your lead. Congratulations to everybody who's been honored here tonight. But it is with immense Panther pride that I have the opportunity to not honor one Orchard Valley staff member this evening, but two. So the first staff member I would like to start with is Orchard Valley's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Amanda Horzwood. Now that's what I'm talking about. All right, all right. I knew they could do it. Are we done now? Sorry. Mrs. Horzwood has been an integral part of the OV team for 16 years. Mrs. Horzwood is not only a math teacher at OVMS, she's a co-advisor for the OV yearbook and is an active part of every school event and our sixth-grade class council. She is the heart of our school community. You'll find her at every single school event: shapering the dance, volunteering at fundraisers, taking the yearbook photos, or just being a friendly face in the crowd. Her presence is a constant reminder of how much she cares about our students, our staff, and the spirit of our school. She also plays a vital role in shaping the culture and climate of our building. Mrs. Horzwood doesn't just show up, she leads, but quietly. Her warmth, kindness, and genuine care for everyone she meets creates a ripple effect of positivity that impacts every corner of our school community. But what sets Mrs. Horzwood apart, most of all, is the way she connects with people. She doesn't just teach students, she believes in them. She listens, encourages, and she makes every individual feel seen and valued. She reminds us all, through her actions, that education is about so much more than academics. It's about nurturing hearts and minds. Mrs. Horzwood is a prime example of excellence in our building and was recently selected by our principal's cabinet to embody the pillar of excellence in Panther Pride, our school motto. A student who nominated Mrs. Horzwood said, "She's very kind and will always help me when I need it. She's also really good at explaining things." Additionally, a colleague said, "She might be the sweetest person that works at OVMS. She is caring and kind to everyone she meets. Mrs. Horzwood makes sure every student and adult in her class feels loved and cared for every day." On behalf of Orchard Valley, we thank you for your tireless dedication, your unwavering kindness, and your ability to make our school a better place every day. You are a bright star at OV that brings out the shine in everything you do. Let's give one more round of applause to OV's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Amanda Horzwood. I told them to show out, sorry. They can't help it now, sorry. All right. Additionally, I have the privilege of honoring the middle-school-level Educational Services Professional of the Year, OV's sixth-grade school counselor, Mr. Jed Wobney. You guys are making this a lot of fun. Mr. Jed Wobney started his career in Washington Township as an art teacher and has even been honored as a Teacher of the Year during that time in his role. Now, Mr. Jed Wobney has been a school counselor for the past 14 years and co-advises our eighth-grade class and coaches our girls' basketball team. Mr. J truly embodies positivity, the first pillar in Panther pride, through his service to the school community with heart, compassion, and dedication. As a school counselor, Mr. J serves as a cornerstone of support for our students and staff alike. Whether helping a student navigate personal challenges, guiding them through academic decisions, or simply being a listening ear on a tough day, he has a way of making everyone, students and staff, feel valued and understood. He reminds us daily of the power of kindness and the importance of connection in our work. Mr. J also has a unique ability to create a safe space for every individual he encounters and is well-known around our building for his permanent smile, which he doesn't have right now because I'm talking about him, and hallway greetings. I was like, "Come on, dude." His warmth and sincerity are immediately apparent to anyone who crosses his path. He doesn't just listen, he guides and empowers, helping students and staff to overcome challenges. A student who nominated him said, "Mr. J was the nicest and most helpful person through seventh grade, and I couldn't ask for a nicer counselor for our school. He is caring no matter the problem, and he found a way to resolve every problem I had." Even now that he's not my school counselor this year, I still go to him to talk, no matter the problem. Mr. J, on behalf of Orchard Valley, we thank you. We honor your tireless efforts, your boundless compassion, and your ability to make a profound difference in the lives of all around you. You are a shining example of what it means to be a servant leader, someone who leads not by words but by actions and who inspires us all to be better, kinder, and more present for our students and for each other. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition and honor. Let's hear it one more time for the Orchard Valley Educational Services Professional, Mr. J. Congratulations, Jeff. And now, the one and only, the high school principal, Herr Ray Anderson.
Good evening, Township, and welcome to WTHS. I see the beautiful signs out there. You are here in our playhouse this evening. It's a very special night as we recognize some professionals who have had a profound impact on the lives of many in our community. As executive principal here at WTHS, joined by executive assistant principal, Mr. Sav, supervisor of social studies, business education, gifted and talented, Mr. Jeff Snyder, and amazing assistant principals, Mrs. Angela Costello, Mr. Dan Saye, Dr. Greg Muselli. We're very proud to have everyone here tonight to recognize some outstanding professionals. I would like to ask them to join me up front at this time, Mrs. Sheri Yan, Ms. Shannon Malloy, and nurse Kathleen Luckowitz. Come on down. You guys have a very big fan club here this evening. So very excited. I do want to give a quick shout-out to Whitman Elementary, to Ms. Campbell. Congratulations. It's good to see you here. And many of your students here, too. That was very cool to see some of the Wildcats. So I am going to begin our presentation tonight with our Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sheri Yan, teacher of English. Mrs. Yan is currently in her 17th year of teaching English, her seventh at WTHS, and she is an alumna of this great high school. Mrs. Yan is joined tonight by her husband, Nick, her son, Lucas, who is a proud fifth-grader at Thomas Jefferson Elementary, and her mom, Toni Silvestri, who is a secretary here at WTHS. Mrs. Yan, when you say the word "involved," is very involved and very busy here. All of these ladies are. But Mrs. Yan especially, she's the co-advisor of one of our largest organizations, the Interact Club, which is -- wow, and they're here. Nice to see you. Thank you for coming and supporting your teacher. Co-advisor, it's an organization that runs many activities for the betterment of our community, including Monzo Madness, which raises funds for ALS, various pace-setters dances, Festival of Friends for our special education students and community, among many other beneficial programs for our students. You can also find Mrs. Yan, together with her co-advisor, Mr. Mack, and the Interact students, at every single football game. They are out in that cold, in that snack bar, cheering on our Minute Med and supporting our community as well. Mrs. Yan is also the co-advisor of the People's Choice Awards, which is a ceremony each spring in which staff members choose students to be recognized for their contributions to the school community in various ways. Mrs. Yan has also served as the honors coordinator at WTHS, putting together our annual honors banquet and senior awards night, which are two extremely large, complicated, very beautiful undertakings. In addition to her work as a teacher and advisor, Mrs. Yan has also delved into the world of curriculum and instruction, as she has authored the curricula for two courses of study, namely Contemporary Literature and Enrichment 12. From the words of those who nominated Mrs. Yan, "Mrs. Yan has a strong rapport with her students in which she challenges them, holds them accountable, makes learning meaningful, and loves them. Mrs. Yan instills in us a love of community service and leadership. She cares about the students' academic success as well as their personal growth and well-being. And as a colleague," this is another quote, "I can see how hard Mrs. Yan works for the betterment of her students and of our school. Mrs. Yan ensures that her ninth-through-12th-grade students in class and in her organizations are prepared for their next phase of life, which is one of the most important things we do, is prepare our students for the future." Such an important, crucial aspect of what we as educators do. So I ask you to please join me in saluting and congratulating and congratulating Mrs. Yan, our WTHS Teacher of the Year. So I'm going to be up here for a little bit because we have a few more people to recognize. I would now like to congratulate and salute our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Shannon Malloy, teacher of business education. I think that's your face on those signs there, as a matter of fact. Ms. Malloy is currently in her 17th year of teaching at WTHS, after working in retail management at Sears for 13 years prior. Ms. Malloy is also an alumna of our fantastic high school. Ms. Malloy is joined tonight by her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Jim and Tina Malloy, her brother, Michael, her sister Pam, and her twin sister, Mrs. Trish Pender, who was a teacher of math here at WTHS. Ms. Malloy is deeply involved with our students, both in the classroom and in their extracurricular activities. Again, another person who was always involved and always around for the students, much like Mrs. Yan as well. Ms. Malloy is currently the co-advisor of the Student Council here at WTHS and the business advisor for the plays and musicals for our theater department. You have probably received many an email from Shannon as she advertises for our stellar productions, including Shrek, which is coming up in the spring. I hope you'll join us here. We'll be over in the big, very beautiful RBPAC as well. Little plug for the theater department and to help you get the ticket sales going a little bit. Ms. Malloy and her co-advisor, Ms. Mason, are behind-the-scenes in myriad activities, including our annual homecoming dance, which is an undertaking where we have over 1,500, 1,600 students attend right here at school, the crowning of our homecoming queen each year, and also Mr. Washington Township, which is coming up in the next few months. With her background in the business world, students are able to move from theory to practice as they engage in activities such as running the school store and competing in DECA and FBLA each year. Ms. Malloy can be found at our dances, proms, and other activities and is always willing to assist our students. Supervisor of social studies, business ed, and gifted and talented education, Mr. Jeff Snyder shared, "Within the classroom, Ms. Malloy has a tireless commitment to fostering a collaborative and engaging learning environment for her students. She continues to make connections between the content knowledge and real-world scenarios in order to enhance the instruction in the classroom. Outside the classroom, Ms. Malloy looks to immerse herself within the school and overall community." As a member of Student Council, a student says, "I can say that Ms. Malloy has been such a great mentor to me, showing me the strength to be my own woman with my own voice." Business management class, that's worthy of applause, absolutely. "Business management class this year has been amazing. Class is creative, fun, and real-world. I feel like I could work in a business and do a good job." As a colleague, another teacher says, "I can say that she never stops. Steady, consistent force, ready to serve. She is also generous with her time and a respected educator on our staff." So again, join me in congratulating Ms. Malloy as our WTHS Teacher of the Year. So it is also my distinct pleasure to introduce you to our school nurse extraordinaire, our 2024-25 Education Service Professional of the Year, Nurse Kathleen Luckowitz. Nurse Luckowitz began her career in nursing, spending 22 years at Our Lady of Lourdes Hospital and at Jefferson University Hospital. She then transitioned into the illustrious world of school nursing and worked at Orchard Valley Middle School, right up front here. I'm sure you remember Nurse Luckowitz as well. And now here at WTHS in the 1112 Building. Nurse Luckowitz is joined tonight by her husband, Ed, and her son, Eddie. Actually, all three of Nurse Luckowitz's children are graduates of WTHS, and so she's always had a very positive connection with our community and, of course, with our school. Nurse Luckowitz is also a lover of horses and actually owns a horse named Bailey. And I found out at our faculty meeting, and we were talking about your interest in horses, which I think is great. You can find Nurse Luckowitz always happily helping a student or staff member in need, whether it is helping someone who is sick, doing screenings, or answering students' questions, or just giving them advice, because students need advice, and they go to her and they ask questions. She's always happy to help. Nurse Luckowitz is so professional, she's so caring, and very thorough. I have observed her in action on many occasions right here at school, but also at last year's senior trip. Because if you remember correctly, you and I had a student who was very, very ill on the senior trip last year, and we drove all over Florida. It's very difficult to get urgent care in Florida. I don't know if you know that. But we had a very hard time, and they're closed, and they don't take this insurance. It was quite a night. I think we were involved for like seven, eight hours trying to find something. But my point in sharing that is, the whole time, she was right by that student, keeping him calm, helping me to drive. Well, I was driving, she was giving me a little bit of directions, but helping us to get there, get where we needed to go. It was an interesting ride. And we were finally able to help the student, and her caring and kind ways got us through that. From the words of those who nominated Nurse Luckowitz, "The many responsibilities she faces daily would be overwhelming for some, but Kathleen smiles through it all, never making anyone feel as though they are bugging her with any question or concern that they have. The job of a school nurse has greatly changed in the past years. Kathleen works through all of the changes with humor and with professionalism. Kathleen manages her responsibilities with diligence, ensuring that all health records, medications, and sensitive information is handled with the utmost care and respect." Nurse Luckowitz always knows what to say -- these are the nominations -- "Always knows what to say to make me feel better or less stressed." Although you've helped me before when I've been a little stressed, too, so that's a good thing. Principals work so closely with school nurses. For those of you who don't work in education necessarily, every day, we're in communication and talking about student cases, things that are happening in the school, school health, to ensure that everyone is safe and as healthy as we can. So the relationship between principal and nurse is a very special one, and we do work together quite frequently. So she's a calming person, professional, loves the students. Please join me in another round of applause for Nurse Luckowitz.
If we could just give all of our Teachers of the Year and our Education Service Professionals of the Year another round of applause. So absolutely proud of everybody who was honored tonight. They are so deserving of this honor, and in many cases, it's long overdue. This is like a lifetime achievement award for many of the staff members here. So again, another great night. One of the things that I want to let everybody know is that I'd like to take a group picture of all the recipients today, and then there's going to be some extra snacks and refreshments, and I think a cake. We often have a sheet cake. I don't know if it's there, but it's in the cafeteria out to my left. So once this final picture's taken, we'll have everybody come up, all the recipients, take their picture, and then if you can join us for about 20 to 30 minutes, just saying hi to everybody, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you, everybody. Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Congratulations. What'd you want to say? Starly.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. What'd you want to say? Starly.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front, we'll take your picture.
Teachers of the Year, Service Professionals of the Year, if you can come to the front,
We're in public, so I don't have to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, hello, thank you for all for staying, isn't that nice lovely event that we had? Okay. Um, discussion items, any discussion items?
I have one.
Yes.
I don't know if it's a discussion item, or I have to wait till it comes up on the agenda.
If it's an item on the agenda.
Then I should wait.
Until we have the discussion about it and talk about it.
Is this what we talked about right before the meeting?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, let's do the, there'll be discussion after everything, we make a motion, then we second it, then we have discussion.
Okay, perfect.
So I think that's under finance?
I don't, I think so.
I'll tell you when we get there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other general discussion?
Julie, I just have one.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Law Liberty.
Thank you, I just wanted to apologize to everybody that I wasn't here for the celebration of awards. My family had a tragedy today, so I'd gone home to check on them and I'm pretty, I'm pretty upset myself and they're all pretty upset, so I didn't want my solemn mood to cast a cloud of, uh, black cloud over the joyous celebration of the teachers here, but I did want to just congratulate everybody and say, you know, all the teachers, congratulations, and people like them are really what makes this district run, so congratulations to everybody.
If I, if I could as well, so again, not to piggyback off what Scott just said, that I obviously wasn't here, I was watching it virtually, um, I had a family matter that I had to attend to with no choice, so, um, congratulations to all the teachers of the year, it was very cool, at least I had a chance to watch it virtually on the way over here, so, um, that's the reason why I wasn't here, so my apologies.
Thank you, um, I think we have a report from Mr. Distillio, is he here? Oh, there you are, sorry, Mike, um, do you want to give your report out now?
Sure, um, a couple things, um, Dr. Hibbs, thank you for doing that Hoagies chant on the night, uh, we clinched the, uh, the birth to the Super Bowl, since that aired, Dr. Hibbs, um, we sold a lot more Hoagies and a lot more Hoagie trays, so.
Who?
Um, I appreciate that help, um, just want to give another shout out, I also went to town council, they've been very helpful in trying to promote the Hoagie sale, um, we're trying to make our mark of 3,000 Hoagies, um, Hoagie sales, we've realized really heavily on the pre-orders, which are due the 6th of February, to be picked up at the Gant Town entrance, um, the 910 building, um, around 1:00 p.m. you have the new store transfer pre-order, there'll be some available, probably not many, so, um, we encourage everybody to do a pre-order, if nobody wants some Hoagies, we just ask for, um, donation, do that, and all that information from www.tps.org, um, splash page. Um, additionally, um, the school idol, um, the parent square just went up, remember the school idol, that is actually being relocated to this location, which you can do at the valley, but it's going to be in the playhouse, um, this Friday at 7:00, you're going to hear, um, about 26 young voices, you're going to hear last year's idol winner, who's Vazetti, and then you're going to hear, um, what's the talent of this club, the relative momentum dynamics, they've been performing well, so, um, hopefully we can attend, that's a little preview from Pop Culture coming up, um, in a couple of weeks as well. Um, today, I'm very pleased to announce that, um, we sent parents squares and updates to families, um, regarding, um, physical registration, so that is alive and well, regarding down several hundred registrants for, um, three-year-olds and several, um, four-year-olds trying to register as well, so, uh, that's going to be, uh, that lottery is going to be produced on February 20th at 6:30 p.m., and it's going to be livestreamed by, um, my office, and I'm on the service that is going to take care of their, their wells, um, and then also another shout out to Mr. Lindstad, we, uh, he secured the opportunity to get our podcast on Spotify, so not only can you watch it on YouTube. You can listen to it on Spotify, um, um, this week, on the 4th, is going to be released, um, Muckler Hill, Miss Kirkwood and Three Students, so, I'm just trying to give a shout out to the people that do, so, at this time, that's all I have to, um, to grant, um, for this, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hibbs, did you want to make a statement or not?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President, uh, just want to, just say publicly, we, we've done a few things recently to advocate for changes to the funding formula, uh, of note, yesterday, uh, Pittman organized, want to give a very special thanks to the Pittman School District for organizing, uh, anyone from Gloucester County that wanted to come and talk about the funding formula and the reform, and, and really what came out of that is, uh, is, is really trying to connect on concepts such as c- uh, capping, the local fair share growth, uh, really discussing a, an appeal process for enrollment and weighted populations, uh, for instance, no school district receives the special end funding that we need, and transportation need has been held flat for just numerous years, uh, we talked about really advocating to fully fund the formula, uh, and, and really just to streamline the concept of knowing and predicting what we can get from year to year, school districts across the state can never predict what they're supposed to get year to year, and it's really problematic as state aid is released very late in the process, and then we are all left with very little time to, to finalize a budget, so, we are, we are hoping that the state hears us on the fact that so many things have changed since about 2008, when the funding formula was instituted, and, you know, our world is not the same, we didn't have smartphones the way we did in 2008, right, think back to what that actually meant, I had been an administrator for, I think, three years at that point, and I'm in my, you know, well, well, well above that now, I don't want to actually even say the number anymore, so, we need, we need support, and I think they are hearing that, but we need some action, so, uh, thanks to Pittman, and thanks to the board members who went to all of the, the funding, uh, formulas with us, uh, and the meetings, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hibbs, um, in that same vein, I did hear back from Legislative District Four, and this Friday, they would like to meet with us at 2:30 or 3:00 p.m., so if you're interested in, if you're a board member and you're interested in attending that, you can just let me know after the meeting, and Dr. Hibbs and Janine, obviously, they were interested in meeting with you as well, and that would be with our two, um, Legislative District Four, our two Assemblymen and Senator Moriarty, we generally do this, uh, I just heard back from John Saban, I'm checking the email right now, um, generally, we've done this to advocate on behalf of our students with our legislators, because they do have some influence over, some influence, they have influence over the state budget, and also, they've been very influential in helping us in the past, so we hope, um, to have that again, and also to hear them out on some of the changes, so, that would be really good.
Madam President, we, um.
Julie, what time was that again?
2:30 or 3:00, they said either 2:30 or 3:00.
Is it in district or?
At their offices, which are on Johnson Road.
Okay.
You got it, uh, we spent time with the Assemblyman, uh, last night, he was very supportive, so, I think that'll hopefully be a great conversation.
Um, just an update, is there an update on the, moving the school, uh, meetings to the schools for February, I was kind of looking forward to February and wanted to see if we had any movement on that, I, I had sent everyone the updated proposal, we talked about there might be a cost if there's overtime of about $1,300, this is so important to me that I'd be willing to personally pay that $1,300, um, if we wanted to do it, oh, I can't do that, never mind, I can't do that, but I think it's, it's well worth it to, like I said, bring government to the people, and I'd like to see if we could just move forward for the regular session meetings, um, in February, and just maybe do them in alphabetical order, you know, bells, birches, so on and so forth, kind of like we did tonight, and if they need to move things around, they move things around, so I wanted to see if there's any more information on that, or questions about that.
We'll be ready for you.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay, does anyone have any issues that you see with that, if you do, you can let me know, but I appreciate the, I really want to thank the administration for, um, working on that for us, I'm hoping that maybe we can, uh, Mike, you can work to promote that through the schools somehow, oh, I'm not directing you to do that, but, um, Dr. Hibbs, maybe the district can work on, um, promoting that with the elementary schools, to try and get as many people out as we can, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, the other news, starting in February, is Calista Phoenix, next to me, Tower Borelli, Calista Phoenix Reed.
Alexandria.
Alexandria Tower Borelli, she's the best name ever, um, she is going to start reporting out again at our regular session meetings in February, she's going to make an appointment with, um, Mr. Anderson, I know he's here somewhere, and, um, she has an intention to, she shared with me, feel free to, to say this if you would like, but, she shared with me that she really wants to report out on some of the unsung heroes and kids that you don't necessarily hear about at an honors event, or things of that nature, so she's going to work together with the principal and the administration to bring us some great news from the high school, and questions, and have a good symbiotic relationship with them, sound good? And I'm on a group text with her and her mom, because I don't want to be like texting her directly, and it's called BOE with Callie, which I think is a great podcast name for Callie, to have a podcast called BOE with Callie, no one thought that was funny, except for us, okay, anyway, um, what else, I think that was it, and, so moving forward, can I, oh, can I have a motion?
Julie.
Someone saying my name, yes.
Sorry, it's hard to get attention down here.
It's okay, it's so hard to see, so just holler.
Yeah, um, this, since we're in discussion, I thought I'd just give my thoughts on the moving of the board meetings, you know, to the schools, I, I think it's a good idea, Mike, I have two concerns, and I don't know how the other board members feel about it, concern one is the cost, I know it's nominal cost, but it is a cost, and, you know, costs are tight, and budgets are tight right now, and then second is, you know, creating work for the district personnel, I think it does create more work for our folks to have to set up and take down and stuff like that, so those are my two concerns, um, and take down and stuff like that. So those are my two concerns. I would, because of that, I would prefer to just continue to have them at the central administration, but I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
Noted. Anyone else want to?
Julie?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, the same as Scott. I just, I don't know if we could even just do a quick survey, if there's a way that we could do that even through Parent Square. I'm not really sure, just to see if the community would attend. We would have more, I guess, participation from the community. I don't think it's a bad idea, but to Scott's point right now, every dollar does matter. So if we don't have to spend the 1,300, I prefer not to. But in theory, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just, I don't know if it would increase participation or not. I guess we won't know until we do it, but that's just my general concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I made a note about those two comments. Can I have a motion to approve items of correspondence for the month of December? There are two emails and discipline reports. Need a motion.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Yes. Was there a second? I couldn't hear. Okay. And that's not a roll call. So all in favor, correct? Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I can, I can. Okay, okay. Ari's saying to me that the easiest thing to do with moving the meetings is to make a motion to revise the document that we approved at the reorganization, which was for the dates of the meetings.
Is the schedule previously approved? If the board wants to change the locations of the meetings, obviously, we need to re-advertise. So we really need a motion to approve a change to those locations. And then Janine, obviously, you'd have to send out a re-advertising for all those meetings.
Sure.
Okay, so I make a motion that we vote to amend the 2025 meeting dates document to include a change of location for the regular session meetings in February, March, April, sorry, February, March, April, May, June, and July to be held at the elementary schools in alphabetical order, for lack of a better idea. Can I get a second? I can make that motion. Yeah. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
Are we going to have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
But we need a second first.
Second.
Okay. Yes, just any discussion?
Yeah, my only discussion would be the summer months of June and July. It might be a little bit more difficult to get people to come to board meetings at the schools because of all the different activities that are at, especially the elementary schools, high school, that parents are involved in. So it's just a quick comment. I have no problem with February, March, April, and May. I'm just looking at June and July.
That's a fantastic point. My computer just turned off. So we could, what if we just jumped the summer and we did, hold on, let me get my computer back on.
And pick it back up?
Yes, and pick it back up.
Yeah. You know, the other fall process too, you know, summers, we have so many supplies that come in. So they, there's boxes literally everywhere.
Yeah, it's not really, it's a great point. It's not really a good time, right?
Yeah. So we could just tack it right on and start in September and October if it pleases the board.
Okay, thank you, Elaine, for that. So then, let me amend the motion, I guess, so that it would be February, March, April, May, and then September, October of next school year. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Wait, wait, one more discussion. So if you're going to do it at each school, is that going to cover each school? Should we go into November?
Well, I was just suggesting the elementary schools because those are kind of like the, have more reach. Any kid, obviously, that goes to one of our elementary schools then goes to the related middle school. If you guys want to do it at the middle schools as well.
No, that's fine. I just wasn't sure if it was just the elementary schools.
That was my suggestion. I think if it works out, we could move it, but I just think having it at the homeschool, that was, that was the original.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
My goodness. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
No.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And we can work out some of the details. I'm sure the administrations will handle some of the details. Thank you, everyone. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 10th and 17th executive and public meetings, four meetings total?
I have a question.
I asked for a motion, and then we need a second, and then we can discuss. Connie, do you want to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Connie. Ms. Baker.
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question on the minutes of December 10th, action item number 12. I have to ask the solicitor this. There was a list of names, okay, on this action item, and I noticed there's an additional name that wasn't on it originally. And I just, I don't, how do you, how do we go about that? I don't know if when I was looking at the agenda, something got added later after it came out.
Connie, I need more clarification. I'm not sure what you're referring to. I don't know if you have any.
There was a list, there was a listed, there was a list of teachers under this action item, and I noticed a name of a teacher that I did not see because I had asked questions about it.
For the minutes? We're talking about the minutes?
The minutes, right, the minutes, the minutes. The minutes reflects a teacher's name that was not on the minutes that I saw, not on the agenda that I saw.
You could make a motion to amend the minutes if you don't believe they're accurate, or you could simply vote no. You know, I don't have any other-
Am I allowed to say the teacher's name?
No, we should refrain from these. Well, if you're voting, if you're making a motion, just use the initials of the teacher.
Just give the initials of the teacher?
If you're going to go that round, yes.
Okay, okay. So, and I just want to get clarification. I want to, I want to make sure that I'm accurate. I know I was interested in that particular, what do you call, action item, restorative justice in the schools, and it listed the teacher's names. And I saw a teacher's name that wasn't there when I first looked at it. I see it now.
Okay, okay. The minutes aren't opening for me suddenly, the attachment. I would say, I'm trying to get this open, but.
It's action item number 12 under December.
Mine's not open. There's no attachment on mine. Are you guys able to see an attachment?
Action number 12, December 10th, the work session.
No, I'm not. Hold on, it's me logging.
Let me find it for you.
I thought that was the public. It was public.
What item, Connie?
It's number 12, action item 12 under instructional affairs. There it is, right here. See this person's name right here? That person's name wasn't there when I was talking about it because I-
Yeah, so I obviously didn't prepare the minutes. I don't know, you know, when or how that name got on there. But again, you can make a motion to amend. You could simply vote no. I, I don't have any other information, though, in regard to how that name got there, obviously.
Connie, is your motion to amend to remove a name or add a name?
Remove the name because I don't recall seeing it when I was talking about it that day, my notes on restorative justice.
Wow.
Which minutes are you talking about, the 10th or the 17th?
The 10th.
Executive or regular?
No, it's under the work session, action number, action item 12.
No.
Under IA.
It's halfway down, Julie, if you literally just go-
Just tell me what page.
11 of 21.
Thank you. Dr. Hibbs, is this, is this to be amended?
I think it's the last name of the list.
Okay, so Connie, you're saying this employee was not on the agenda when you voted?
That's, that's what I have from my notes because I was talking about this issue, particular issue that night, and I knew what the names were on there.
I'm just going to pull up the agenda just to double check and see from the 10th. He's there. It's on there.
Wasn't there that night. I know the person.
I would say just vote no then. I mean, it's on the agenda from the prior meeting.
Okay.
I would see if I know it. I don't know.
And I'll talk to you after as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call. No, excuse me. Now, Mrs. Hartong, Mrs. Clancy, and I are, we should have seen because we weren't at those meetings. I'm abstaining.
You don't have to abstain, but you can.
Oh, I don't? Oh, so we do all in favor, aye?
If I get it recorded, I'm voting no about these minutes.
You're going to vote no.
Okay.
For the minutes, we can?
That's how you want to vote, yes.
Okay. Sorry, Linda and Elaine.
We can vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Wait a minute, I want to vote no.
Connie is a no. Any ayes?
Initials D or?
She's no initial DR and everyone else is a yes. Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public? Thank you. Can I have a motion open to the public?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Randy Ford.
Randy.
There you are.
Hello, just two things real quick. On the Bring Government to the People initiative that just got voted on, one thing that wouldn't cost any money is Parent Square notifications about the meetings. That doesn't happen today, at least I'm not on a list. I'm on Herfield Elementary and Bus 9 and, you know, other things, but we don't, we advertise it on the YouTube video or YouTube channel, Facebook, the website, but Parent Square push notifications are not currently being used, and I don't think that that would be an additional cost. The other thing is, in terms of the initiative and the cost to the district, I don't know if in the $1,300 sunshine notices or the additional publication was also considered in that 1,300 because if we're required to advertise with the Courier-Post or the Gloucester County Times, there is a cost there as well. The other thing is, you'll have to go back, and again, you know, I don't think the motion to amend from Ms. Kuzempel was ever seconded during when you all just voted. So there was a motion to make the, or a motion to put on the floor a second. Then there was discussion. Ms. Clancy talked through with the summer months, but I don't know that I actually heard a motion to, a second. So just kind of curious of who made that motion and how that would be recorded. And then just the last thing, I know at last meeting, they talked about, I think it was Mr. Serrano made a comment about bringing government to the people, or maybe it was the reorg, sitting down, not at a dais, right, like sitting with the people. The only thing I would sort of remind the board, I think it's, it sounds great, except you have folks, if you came down here and this wasn't raised and everybody was below or at the same level, people in the back, you want to get more public participation, they're not going to see the front, right? They're not going to see who's talking. They're not going to see who's actually saying things. So while great in concept, I think you have to think about those folks in connection with that initiative. And the last thing I would just say too is, think or be mindful of where you're going to have your executive sessions. I sat in the lobby at Elaine Abbott at last meeting's executive session. There was visible screams, yells from the board. It sounded like to each other. So just if we're going to have meetings in other schools where we're necessarily going to have sports activities going on, other community events, just be mindful that you pick somewhere that's maybe a little more soundproof. So the kids and other people that hear or attend aren't picking up on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Lori, Mrs. Reese said that Steve Serrano seconded that motion. She records everything and she'll kind of let me know if there's a second. It is difficult to hear in here, though. It really is. And thank you for noting those other things. I think in general, we're looking to improve decorum in our meetings. So on, anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close with the public? Thank you, Mrs. Hartong. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Clancy. Okay, on to the superintendent's report. The administration is seeking approval of the monthly enrollment report, security drills and suspension reports, also seeking approval for one senior privilege request and two resolutions, one to establish February 3rd to the 7th as National School Counseling Week for the Washington Township Public Schools, and one to recognize our board members for the month of January, which is School Board Recognition Month. I wanted to read to you all, I brought this to Dr. Hibbs' attention and he made it happen, that we're going to honor all of you. January is School Board Appreciation Month, so you're all going to get a certificate that says, presented to your name of the Washington Township Board of Education in recognition of their dedicated service to the students of our community, presented during School Board Recognition Month for January 2025. Can I have a motion to approve items one through five under the report of the superintendent?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Pass those down, please. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, and also thank you to our guidance counselors. We appreciate you. I always say we need more of you. Next up, we have Instructional Affairs. The district is seeking approval of the CUSAC waiver mentioned by Dr. Nathan last week. To remind you, this was so we could use the new standards for CUSAC to achieve an even higher score than our already passing score. Thank you to her and her team for that. Also seeking approval of the high school program of study for 2025, 2026, which is essentially what you need to do to graduate, as well as field trip destinations for 2024, 2025, school year, including coals for our 18 to 21-year-old special education students who are in the work program, as well as the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America field trip locations to Cornerstone, Montessori and Pittman, Guidepost, Montessori and Laurel Oaks, Naudane, Montessori Academy and Voorhees. Can I have a motion to approve items one through three under Instructional Affairs? Anybody can make a little motion.
Motion.
Thank you. You know what? Mrs. Hartong, why don't you just make all the motions?
You're rocking it today.
Unless somebody else feels the need. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think that was Elaine, yes. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. On to policy. This is the second reading of these policies from last week. All policies are brought to the board for a first reading, which moves it forward to a second reading with or without changes and then a final vote. Excuse me, I just lost my place. So this is the second reading, which is the first, sorry, which is the second pass on the policies for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, student smoking, electronic surveillance in school buildings and school grounds, school security programs, spectator code of conduct, cooperation with law enforcement, and bylaw for the board call adjournment and cancellation of a meeting. Can I have a motion to approve items one through seven under policy? call adjournment and cancellation of a meeting. Can I have a motion to approve items one through seven under policy?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Reese?
I had submitted some comments on K four, the school security program one. Uh, I believe, Dr. Hibbs, you were going to talk to the attorney on it. I, I don't know. You've had a chance to talk through those, but if you haven't, would it be advisable to maybe table that?
Yep.
Yeah?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, do you want me to make a motion to table that?
Yep.
Okay.
Which, which ones, Scott?
K four, it's, it's on the school security program. I don't want to go into too much detail, because it's about security, but
Oh, yeah.
It gets very, you, you, I think.
Yes, I saw your email.
Yeah, so it, it gets pretty specific on some certain things that I'd rather point to a standard rather than us be specifying them, so that's what I'd like the attorney to weigh in on, so. Um, until we can get that feedback, I would suggest we table it, so I'm going to make a motion that we table K four.
Okay, um, I actually think, I actually misread, because I had in my notes that I made before the meeting, items one through seven, but there are actually only, oh, there are seven things listed, okay. So, Ari, um, I, can I amend the motion to remove, um, to remove number, uh, I know, I'm sorry, to remove number six?
Four.
Four.
It's four.
I apologize, number four. Yes. I mean, Scott, also, also Scott, I think you made a really good point with your comments. I don't know if you want to say them publicly, but I, I mean, I agree with you completely. Do you want to tell the, should we tell the public a little bit about what we're?
I don't think it presents any risk.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, because it's security.
Okay, we need a second for Scott's motion to amend. Can I have a second to, for Scott's motion to amend? Basically removing number four. Thank you, Elaine. Okay, so we're voting on items one through three and five through seven. Do that right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
This is the motion to table four.
And approve the rest, right?
And approve the rest.
Right?
Can't hear down this end.
I made a motion for one through seven.
And he amended it, so move four. He made a motion to table four.
Um, why can't I just rescind my motion and make it one through three, removing four?
And so now you either have to amend.
Scott made a motion and we seconded, just vote on that at the table, K four, and then we'll vote on our name included items.
Okay. I already motioned for the, all seven. Do I have to rescind it?
He didn't second before you motioned, right?
I'm pretty sure I have to rescind it. Okay. I, I rescind my initial motion, and we're voting on Scott's motion to amend by removing item four.
What are we voting on now?
We're voting to remove, not vote on item four under policy.
I got you.
Table.
Tabling it.
Tabling it.
Okay. Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Okay. That motion carries. So now I'd like to, I'm making a motion to approve items one through three and five through seven under policy. Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can we, um, so should I just obviously put this right back on work session? We'll clarify, gather the information we need, bring it back for discussion?
Yeah, that's what I think you're suggesting.
Got it, perfect.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion to approve items one and two under student activities and communication. Mrs. Hartong?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms., she's absent, Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. On to Human Resources. District is seeking approval for student teaching placements in our district. One co-curricular for boys golf, five job descriptions, one transfer from a ten-month to an eleven-month for guidance cancer at the high school, extra time for several teachers to cover the health office at Burches and to assist a student with an after-school activity, um, mentorship of a staff member by another staff member at no cost, three salary adjustments, resignation of two more specialized assistants, and eight leaves of absence. Can I have a motion to approve items one through twenty-three under Human Resources?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, actually, I have items one through twenty-three on my notes, but there's only twenty-two items here. Was something removed?
Twenty-three.
All right, so really, this is to approve items one through twenty-two. I had twenty-three when I did this last night.
I had twenty-three as well.
What?
I had twenty-three as well.
You have twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
I have twenty-two.
Are you logged in?
Dr. Hibbs, you have twenty-two?
I have twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
So, was something removed, if some of us had twenty-three and now it's twenty-two? Okay.
No.
I mean, I did this last night, so there was twenty-three on there then.
Yeah, something was removed.
I think there was an email that went out.
There's twenty, twenty-three as of yesterday.
Was there a leave of absence removed, Sean?
Leave of absence removed.
I think it was a resignation.
A resignation was removed? Oh. Okay, well, regardless, we're voting on items one through twenty-two, so I guess we'll figure out what was taken off there. Um, we have a motion and a second, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion? I actually have a couple, I have something, is that here?
Sorry, I, I had one.
Yes.
Um, just so everybody knows, I'm going to be abstaining on number nine, just because that person is the godmother of one of my children, and I don't think it's a conflict, but just to avoid the appearance, I'm going to abstain from that one.
Okay. Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. It was a leave of absence that no longer exists.
Thanks, Sean.
One question I had, which I, um, I kind of mentioned in executive and then realized it was more of a budget question, not a legal question, is for the professional development sheets, it would be really helpful, in my opinion, to see the cumulative number at the bottom, how much we're paying in professional development every month, and also, what is mandatory and what is non-mandatory? Especially when we have a budget crisis coming up, I think one of the things we're going to have to look at sadly is, in my opinion, um, looking at non-mandatory professional development, how much that costs, and if we kind of have a moratorium on that for a year or two to get by. So, is that something that we can see going forward, um, from the district? Does anyone else have an interest in seeing that?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Linda, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bottom line.
Elaine, yes?
Yeah. I'd be interested to see what the cost factor is, bottom line.
Okay, so four, at least four board members are looking for that. So, I guess going forward, could we see that? Just do that calculation for us? I mean, obviously, you could get a calculator out and do it. It would just be easier to see the, the number, um, and that's something to look at when we do the budget. The other thing I had a question about is, um, on, so that was on the A five, guys. The other thing I had a question about is the co-curricular position that's on here. It made me remember when we interviewed for co-curricular positions at one point in time. There was a big, like, hubbub, hubbub about that. Did those interviews happen this year? For these co-curricular positions, was everyone interviewed? Okay, so everyone who's recommended for a co-curricular position interviewed for it, okay. Thank you, and that's all I had. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, uh, Scotty, I think I figured out the difference in the twenty-two, twenty-three. The one that had twenty-three items was missing a number six. It went from number five transfers to number seven additional time, so there was no number six, so there was only twenty-two items on both. It was just a misnumbering on one.
Thanks, Scott. Julie, can you, uh, one more time, so on the, on the A five, you want us to total up the PD and what's, and when we say mandatory versus not mandatory, like, you mean contractually obligated versus not? Or what does mandatory mean?
I mean, I look to you to tell us what that is. I know sometimes people want to do something versus having to do it, and I know at my job, that was cut many years ago sadly, which I don't like as a teacher, but it did have a significant cost savings. So, I just kind of want to know the difference, because people look at the PD and it's a lot, um, but a lot of that, the teachers have to do.
Yeah, absolutely, and we're going to need to keep, obviously, a lot of PD, uh, to drive forward, but totally understand, okay? Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Serrano?
Give me one second. So, for number four, yes to the first three, the athletic trainer, security guard, school counselor, going to abstain from the two director job descriptions, and then no to number five and abstain from number eleven. Yes to the rest, thank you.
Steve, can you do that one more time?
Yes, ma'am. Can we start over, Lori?
Please.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Yes, for number four, M four, yes to the first three, the athletic trainer, security guard, school counselor, abstain from the two di, excuse me, the two director postings. Number five is a no, number eleven is an abstain. Yes to the rest.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Note to number four, note to number five, but note to number eleven.
Mrs. Baker?
Oh, sorry, what about the rest, Ralph? Sorry. You have to say yes to the rest if the, if those are the only no's?
Say what?
Are you yes to the rest?
Yes to the rest.
Thanks.
Ms. Baker?
Okay, number four, um, no to school counselor, director of data tech, registration and school community outreach, no to the director of student, school counseling services. No.
Is this?
Number four.
I'm sorry, is that number five?
Four.
Number four.
Okay.
The three job descriptions that were no, school counselor, director of data tech, registration and school community outreach, director of district school counseling services, they're a no. Note to number five, transfer, initials K E C. Note to number eleven, initials J W. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes to all of them.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Abstain on number nine, yes to the rest.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Um, abstain on four completely. I did not have time, you guys, I'm sorry, to look at the changes there. Uh, no to five and yes to the rest.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes.
Could you tell us the, uh, the vote, how this?
I'm waiting to hear from Lori.
So, number four and five did not pass?
Everything else did?
Everything else did.
Okay, did you hear that, Connie?
What was that, M?
Four and five did not pass, the rest did.
Uh, what was the vote on number, um, eleven?
Five, yes.
Five, yes.
A quick question. Um, so, for number five, it was four yes, four no, so it doesn't necessarily fail, correct? So, it doesn't fail and it doesn't pass, so what happened there, unless I'm incorrect with my count?
It, it doesn't carry. The four, four yeses, four noes, it doesn't carry, so whatever action was, uh, recommended will not, uh, take place.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, district, this seat, oh, sorry. Four and five. Under finance and facilities, the administration is seeking, oop, why is I keeping that? Sorry. Um, approval of the monthly reports, including the board secretary report, the treasurer's report, account transfers, the bill list, and the food service financial report, as well as the monthly disposal of fixed assets, state contract purchases, and the monthly resolution to request taxes from the municipality. There is also a contract for professional services, um, for a social history report, as well, oh, sorry, as, um, contracts with agisir, which we use for online course delivery, and Edass for learning evaluation report, also seeking approval for the project graduation location at Dave and Buster's and the senior prom at the Sheridan, as well as the Burches golf course for our golf team. Also asking permission to go out for naming rights of the Performing Arts Center, a joint transportation agreement with Hundred and Center Regional, and some miscellaneous income and a generous donation to the Thomas Jefferson Library. Can I have, I know we have que, you have a question, Linda. Can we have a motion to approve items one through nineteen under finance?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have discussion. This is what I would bring up.
Yeah, this is where you would do that.
So, my question is about agenda number thirteen with project graduation. While I have no problem with it being at Dave and Buster's, I guess the question that we ask every year is why do we have to go into Philly for it, when we have a Dave and Buster's that's fifteen minutes from the school? And why is the district giving them a five thousand dollar donation towards project graduation when they're completely self-funded? I'm just, this is just a question that I've been, it's been mulling in my head.
I don't know how we do this, if I, I can't.
I mean, I know that we've, I know that we've done the five thousand dollars, that's been, that's been a pattern here for a very long time, right?
Yes, it has. It's a budgeted item. I'm, maybe you can signal me, but I feel like the Dave and Buster's that's local is not large enough for our student population. And a security issue.
Okay, so I guess my next question is, just because we've always done it, does that mean we have to continue to do it? I mean, I've done some stupid things as a young kid, but now I don't do it anymore.
No, there's, there's personally, there's a lot that you could stop if you wanted to stop.
Right.
It just seems like, it just seems like a lot of money, and what would stop our middle schools from telling us or asking us for five thousand dollars for their eighth grade graduation party? I think it's a slippery sloop. In my opinion.
Totally agree.
Just my opinion.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I just want to mention that it was a budgeted item in twenty-four, twenty-five, so it is in the current budget.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
Okay, any other discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes for everything but thirteen.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes. Motion carries. Linda, to your point though, it was budgeted this year. That doesn't mean it has to be budgeted next year. I think that's what
That was going to be my question. Okay.
That would at least give people time if it doesn't end up in the budget to plan.
Right.
Thank you. Next, special education, two tuition placements and four tuition rescissions, and a one-on-one aid for a student who is going to Atlanta County Social Services District. Can I have a motion to approve items one through seven under special ed?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes, motion carries. Nothing under negotiations at this time?
Oh, I have, Ms. Kazempel?
Oh, okay.
I have something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, as far as negotiations, the board committee has a scheduled session on January 12th with the principals. Oh, I'm sorry, February 12th, yeah, February, February 12th with the principals and supervisors, and on February 13th with the support staff.
February 13th with who? 14th, okay. Thank you.
Thirteen, 12th and 13th.
Okay, got it, thank you. Any items for new business?
I have something?
Yes.
Not necessarily new, but I would have said it under old. I didn't know what direction we were going in. I just, I want to go back to, let's see, human resources, where we had item number four and five fail or not pass. So without going into executive level commentary, I guess I just want to know, are we going to give a different direction on how this is going to be handled? There were concerns that were brought up in executive session about especially number five. I just need to know.
Just be careful about obviously disclosing what was brought up in exec.
Sorry, I can't hear you down here. I'm over here in Canada.
Just be careful about bringing up what was discussed in exec. I know you weren't going to do that.
Gotcha. Thank you. So I guess my, my concern is that job descriptions didn't pass, and we have now a big gap by not passing number five. So I just want to know, are we going to go back into executive and talk about what that looks like? Because I think it was pretty clear the last executive session as to why that was on representing a cost savings and other things. So I just want to know, are we going back into executive at some point? Because right now, we're just leaving a big hole.
I know that you had an emergency and couldn't be in executive tonight, but I don't think anyone had any plans to go back into executive. It's 10 o'clock. I have a child at home with a fever, so I also have medical reasons why I want to get home. This has been discussed. If it, I don't really think it's something that we can resolve tonight because I don't really think it's our purview. I think the administration's going to have to come up with a new plan. That's just my observation of the situation. Like, we can't tell them what to do, so it's kind of like not really something that we can.
I think, I think we do.
We need to go in executive for. Does anyone else have comments on that? Any other items of new business?
Can we talk about the senior prom? Well, I'm already probably labeled to be a guy for project graduation.
Go like a little bit closer to it.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sure. And I'm sure, it's been asked time and time again, and we've been told time and time again, it's a size issue. Why are we still doing the senior prom in Atlantic City? When ninety-eight percent sure that it could be somewhere local?
I think there's.
There has to be others. I've been to weddings with 500 people that have been local.
I can certainly huddle up with admin and the team and tell you why. Our senior class, the same answer for Dave and Buster's, it's a size is a problem. The venue also allows for kids, I think, to go, you know, right down the shore, and they're all right there. I mean, could it be done differently? Sure, but, you know, I've attended, you know, every one since I've been here. I think our staff do a great job. I think that the kids really understand the rules, and they, and they follow suit. And then we really kind of have it humming like clockwork due to all of our incredible staff.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. Any other items?
I have one, Julie.
Yes.
I don't know if we need to go back into exec for this, but there's a proposed meeting with conflict council. My suggestion is just that we gather all the questions that we want to ask for them in advance prior to that meeting. Do we need to go into exec to discuss that, or is that a general statement like that?
General statement, sorry.
Okay, and we would direct those questions to?
Mr. Serrano.
Steve, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Scott.
And we are, we're not there, right? You guys have this, right?
You don't, I don't.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have Randy Ford.
First, I'll just say I have a four-year-old at home with an ear infection. It's never fun, so hopefully I'll try and make it quick. Microphone usage is still a problem, especially, you know, Ms. Kazempel and Mr. Snyder. It's a public meeting. You guys are, like, you can't hear what's going on. One of my questions is, at the end of, you know, this discussion about conflict council, I think someone said, "We're not there yet," so I was, or, you know, something along those lines. I was curious what that meant. And then if someone could explain M-four and M-five, or, because I don't know what a job description means in the Board of Education world. So like whether it's you're trying to create a job, post a job, there's already an existing job, and you're changing the description. So I don't really follow that. And then what I also don't really understand is, there were four yeses, four nos, and then an abstention. The abstention was because there wasn't time to review the descriptions ahead of the meeting. To me, that kind of seems like you guys know how to motion to table, or say, "Let's bring it up at the next meeting," or somewhere else. So to just abstain for that kind of seems like a punt. And, you know, look, it worked. It failed. Because an abstention's not a vote, so you didn't get five votes, so it went down anyway. But I'm kind of curious what that actually does. What is M-four? What was that designed to do? What is not happening now? So those are my questions. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. I think I can answer the one about the punt. For me, it was a punt. We were given the job descriptions. They put them together very quickly for us, which I'm thankful for that. But when I got mine this weekend, there were no, I couldn't tell what changed. They were, they were all changed job descriptions. And so I asked for like strikeouts, or what was added, what was changed, because I don't know what it originally looked like. And that's not our practice here. So I was given the old job descriptions. Was that today or yesterday? I think today. And so I just didn't have time. I taught all day today, and I did not have time to look. So you could call it a punt. I mean, I'm happy to look at it later, but I just didn't have enough time to look, so that's why I abstained. And I think the other items are for Dr. Hibbs, probably?
Yeah, I'll take that, sure. So I was tasked with revising job descriptions, which we did together very quickly, in a matter of days, dropping what we were doing. So that's, you know, that's what we did there. And secondly, we're not going to have the knowledge to operate the schedule that we need, because I didn't get support on item number five. So now we're totally going to have to scramble, and there very well may be mistakes that are made to affect 2,100 kids at the high school. Sorry.
I think it's, I think there's a lot more to it. I don't, none of us would ever vote. I mean, I have a child going to the high school next year. I don't, none of us, I can say, would ever vote to do anything to hurt kids' schedules. There's a lot more to the situation involving the job descriptions with that, and other things that you know we cannot talk about because they're union-related and personnel-related. So I don't appreciate not being able to give my side, our side of the story.
Oh, no. Again, let me be very clear. I'm not saying that you can't give your side in any way, shape, or form. You should always be free to give your opinion. I was asked a question. You know, I received zero questions on job descriptions except for, "Could you do the strike-throughs?" And I think that came yesterday? Did that come yesterday? And in that moment, I can't take a document that didn't have strike-throughs and strike through it. So I was given a task. I did the task. And the question was, "What's the ramification?" I just simply answered it. And I'm not, I'm not offering judgment. He asked, "What's the ramification?" The ramification is, "We don't have the support we need, and now we have to re-scramble and devise a new plan," just like Madam President said.
Okay. Patty Sukalas.
Put that down a little. All right, good evening. I'm here tonight to express my concern regarding the decision to not run the Green Club and Newspaper Club at our elementary schools this year. As the chair of the co-curricular WTA and an advocate, an advocate for the well-rounded education, I believe this decision deprives our students of valuable opportunities to learn and grow beyond the classroom. Extracurricular activities like these clubs play an essential role in fostering creativity, leadership, teamwork, and environmental awareness in our students. The Green Club encourages responsibility and sustainability, while the Newspaper Club enhances writing, critical thinking, and communication skills. These experiences contribute significantly to the student's personal development and prepare them for future success. There are very few opportunities for our elementary students to be involved in school, so losing two crucial clubs is a major loss for our students. I can personally speak about the accomplishments of the Bells Green Club, as all three of my children were involved. In 2017, at the start of the club, they were the UNLESS contest finalists for the Philadelphia Zoo Contest, where they earned a water bottle, water bottle filling station for Bells, where it was donated, and even the installation was covered. In 2018, 2019, they were the second-place winners for their recycling center, which has been run every year following this year until this one. In 2021, 2022, they were finalists, honorable mentioned, they were honorably mentioned for, again, the UNLESS Zoo Contest, and they were able to adopt penguins for every elementary school in Grenlock. They have a waitlist every year since the first year in 2017. They would take forty, fifth, fourth and fifth graders to work on the UNLESS Project for the Philadelphia Zoo, and some years, they actually did groups of two, and that was one of the years that they won. Without receiving an additional stipend, the two co-advisors then started a junior green club at Bells, where they all took, they took all interested third graders to help them with projects around the building, including running the recycling center. Last year, they had thirty-seven students in this junior green club with no additional stipend. It was disheartening to learn that these positions, that were, by the way, not cut from the budget, and were not posted in September. It wasn't until December that we were actually informed with administration, by administration, that they were pausing these clubs to ensure that there was not more productive use of the funds. While I understand the need for fiscal responsibility, I urge the district to prioritize opportunities that directly benefits the students' learning and engagement. To my knowledge, these are the only clubs that were not cut from the budget, that were not run this current year. I respectfully request that the administration reconsider this decision and explore options to reinstate these clubs. Our children deserve access to a holistic education that includes extracurricular activities to inspire and challenge them. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to your response, and hope we can work together to reinstate these valuable programs to our students. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Does anyone want to respond to her? I don't know anything.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Just maybe clarification with the clubs. I might not understand it. Aren't the clubs listed? And aren't the clubs contractual, that they should happen?
The titles of the clubs are listed in the contract, presumably whether or not they're filled is the managerial priority.
Because my understanding is, if you wanted to add a club, you had to, you had to, it had to be readjusted based on what, another club would go out and another club would come in. I thought that that was something that was worked out with management and labor. So what you're saying, just for purpose of clarification to me, that although the contract lists the title, they really don't have to have it?
It doesn't have to be filled. I mean, I obviously, I don't know anything about, you know, whether or not it was filled or why it wasn't filled. I'm just saying, legally speaking, it doesn't have to be filled, even if it's noted in the contract.
Okay, so, so if, okay, so if you're having some budget problems, and you have thirty clubs, then the administration could say, "We're just going to have ten this year." That's okay.
Conceivably, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're not having those clubs then this year? It's not a delay? They were budgeted for, but we're not running them?
Yeah, we're not running them this year.
Okay, well, can I just ask, why, what was the decision-making process for that?
Sure. I can't talk about all of it, because some things I can't talk about in open. But we made the decision collaboratively that there was, there was a better use of funds for that, that still benefited children. And then there was other concerns, but I can't talk about them publicly.
I have a question, follow-up question, Ms. Kazempel. When, when you mentioned that you talked with people, was that, was that including labor and management, or just management?
No, we would have had a conversation with the, with the reps when we made a final call.
Okay.
We did convey it. And I think, I think Patty did mention that.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Terry Schechter.
Julie, just Julie, before we move on, just a quick question.
Yes, sorry.
Is it something we could add to, like, work session, just to discuss, like, under SAC or instructional affairs? You could bring us up to speed on?
Sure.
And we could discuss in exact the parts that you can't explain, I hear.
Yeah, fine.
Thank you. I agree with that, Scott. I think I'd like to know a little bit more. They sound like successful experiences for the kids, so, yeah, we'll look into it more. Mrs. Sukalas and? Sorry, Mrs. Schechter, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I'll be as brief as possible, so hopefully we can all get home this evening. My planned question was about pre-K transportation. I think it's essential for the district, so I'd like to better understand the budgetary concerns and shortfalls around why we can't provide for Grenlock and Kendall transportation. I think it also would improve safety and efficiency. From what I hear from other parents about drop-off procedures and parking in both those locations, it can be really challenging. So anything we can do to push that to the front for the next school year? I was very excited about the lottery. Hopefully, third time's the charm for, for the lottery for my family. I also, to follow Mr. Ford's questions, don't really understand what's going on with those human resources job descriptions. So recognizing that there are clearly some legal issues about not sharing certain things, is that salary, is that number of bodies? Is there any, we're talking about engaging parents in the public more, and it's just like mud. So if we can understand a little bit about why there's a delay in those decisions, I think any more insight would be very helpful. And I also would love to hear more about the Green Club, because I think I remember at the end of last year when they did an amazing presentation, and it was brought up like we weren't even recycling. So hopefully, we're now recycling. But, you know, if our elementary kids are pointing that out to us, I think it might actually be an important. that out to us, I think it, it might actually be an important, uh, budgetary item. Thanks.
Thank you. As you, as I, I know a lot of people that are in this room know, we can't talk about personnel issues specifically, specific employees. But I'll say that the process should be that if you're making changes in someone's roles and responsibilities, you would put forward the new job description. The board would approve the new job description, and then, any jobs that are affected by that would also have to have new job descriptions. So, tangential to that, um, making a teacher or a guidance counselor an eleven-month position. I know. Um, all I'll say is, teachers and guidance counselors shouldn't be doing administrative work. So, um, it's, sometimes they should, but sometimes they shouldn't. And so, I guess that's all I, I can really say, that there was concerns about that. It's tough, because it's personnel, so. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Sure, Sean.
Just that, the question came up from a few community members in terms of, like, what exactly is job description? So, we're constantly looking to provide job descriptions to make sure they're current and reflective of what, um, those positions, people in those positions do, um, in terms of their day-to-day work, and when there was, obviously, job descriptions that were put together on the schedule, that we don't apply them to current work, we can do it.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And again, congratulations to all our teachers and educational support staff members of the year.